Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Portland's Voter Forum for candidates for the election to the 4th District of the Multnomah County Commission. I am Chris Kobe, a member of the Portland League and the moderator for this forum. The League is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to making democracy work. We believe democracy works best when voters are informed about issues and engaged in their communities. We are presenting this forum to give eligible voters the opportunity to learn more about these candidates. We are grateful for support from the Carroll and Velma Sailing Foundation, the Weiss Foundation, the League of Women Voters of Portland Education Fund, and our media partner, Metro East Community Media. The 4th District of Multnomah County Commission encompasses Eastern Portland, Gresham, Troutdale, Wood Village, and Fairview, and all territory east to the county border with Hood River and south to Clackamas County. All three candidates for this seat were invited to participate in this voter forum. Two of the candidates accepted and are here today for this forum, Brian Knotts and Timothy O. Yoker. Welcome candidates and thank you for participating. Under the voter forum protocol agreed to by the speakers for this event, each of the speakers will give a two-minute opening statement, followed by questions we have prepared based on league positions and league members' interest, and each speaker will have a one-minute closing. Each speaker will have up to 60 seconds to answer each question. The candidates have previously agreed in writing to comply with these time rules and other requirements. To determine the order in which the candidates will present their opening and closing statements and answer questions, we use the Secretary of State of Oregon's current and previous official candidate random alphabets drawn in every election cycle. Mr. Yoker will give the first opening statement. Mr. Yoker, please proceed.
Yep, thank you. Of course, my name is Tim Yoker and the toy initials is First, Middle, and Last Name. But I've been a Multnomah County resident for, since I was born, basically, and I've had, with my combined experience here in the Portland area, I believe I'm qualified for the job. Project management and supervisor training, OSHA safety, and I'm looking forward to serving on the Multnomah County Board of Commissioners. Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Knotts, you may give your opening statement.
Well, first, thank you to the League of Women Voters for creating this forum so that we can, we have an opportunity to talk to the voters about our candidacies. My name is Brian Knotts. I am a local small business owner and IT consultant. I've lived in Multnomah County for 24 years. I'm running for this office for several reasons. One is that in the 2020 election, the establishment candidate, the incumbent, ran unopposed, and I found that unacceptable. I vowed at that time that I would, at the very least, be on the ballot to provide a choice for voters dissatisfied with the direction of our county government. As my candidacy has progressed, I have made an effort to be more of a serious candidate, and if elected, I hope to be a voice on the board for those who are tired of seeing our county mismanaged. We cannot continue to vote in the same people who have allowed our county to devolve into chaos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knotts. Our first question will go to Mr. Knotts. What, if any, changes in the county's policy for addressing the homelessness crisis would you support?
This is a huge question, and there really, the homeless issue is in itself several issues, one of which is addiction, and there's a lot of overlap there. In response, we've been doing the same things for 20 years, and the problem has only gotten worse. The voters were misled into approving Measure 110 due to out-of-state money funding a propaganda campaign. Thankfully, the legislature has backed away from total decriminalization a bit. We may need some more modifications in the future. I think that there are some, some good things being done in other states that deal with kind of both parts of the homeless issue, the addiction and then just the difficulties with housing, and we need to look at what those other states are doing because what we're doing here has not worked.
Okay, well, thank you for that answer. Mr. Yoker, what is your answer to that question?
Well, like, like you said, the homeless is a complicated issue, and there's many problems that are, that make somebody homeless, and a lot of it's a fear, fear of change. That's why these guys aren't moving off the streets of downtown Portland. They don't know where to go, what to do. Of course, there's mental health and drug addiction, and there's all kinds of reasons. But the main thing, I think, is education and, you know, teaching these people how to come back to society and be productive members. It's more like education and vocational training.
Our next question goes to Mr. Yoker. The next commission will be composed mostly of members who have had no prior experience there. What ideas do you have to ensure a productive relationship among these new legislators?
Well, I think communication with all the commissioners, working as a team, is vital, and working with other, other communities, other cities, to solve the problems and possibly even start up an undercover boss program to find out where the problems are, and so we can solve more issues, get more done. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knotts.
Well, I mean, I would say that there have been some interpersonal issues on the current board, so I don't think this is going to be necessarily a new problem. But yeah, you know, I would obviously attempt to get to know where the new commissioners are coming from and, and what, you know, where we can kind of meet in a, in a middle ground to start trying to address the problems. You know, just kind of taking strong positions that aren't going to ever pass doesn't really do anybody good. So, so that would be my, try to build a consensus, at least with the majority of the board, on some new solutions.
My next, the next question goes to Mr. Knotts. If elected, what is the single most important goal you would hope to accomplish as a county commissioner?
Well, this is, this is kind of vague and broad, but really, it's to get the county working again, just because there's this feeling, and I think it's supported by surveys of voters here in Multnomah County, that we're just on the wrong track. And so what I want to do, more than anything, is to reassure people that your county government is working for you, and we are trying to make things better. And beyond that, you know, I think that there are some things, like the road situation, especially in East Multnomah County, you know, getting the roads into a more usable shape would also help with that.
Mr. Yoker, your response?
Infrastructure is pretty darn important, you know, like turning all the Multnomah Counties to solar power or green technology and give the homeowners more of a tax credit so they can put solar panels on the roof and make the city more sustainable, so we're going forward with the green solar power thing.
All right, the next question goes to Mr. Yoker. But first, I want to remind the listeners and viewers that you're watching the video of the Voter Forum of the League of Women Voters of Portland or listening to our podcast for candidates for the 4th District of the Multnomah County Commission. The next question goes to Mr. Yoker. What role would you support for Multnomah County to play in addressing the supply of housing in the region?
What role would I play? Well, the role that I would probably play would be changing building codes, so it does include green solar power, so we're not having to update everything. When you try to update old buildings, you know, it's a lot more expensive than, you know, changing the building codes in advance, you know?
Mr. Knotts?
Yeah, so again, this ties into the homelessness problem. We have a shortage of housing in Multnomah County and in the Portland metro area, and part of the problem is that there is so much bureaucracy getting in the way of building new housing. We have also a broken permitting system. I was talking to somebody from an apartment building organization, and they were telling me that it's taking them a year and a half to get permits to build, build more apartments. And I personally have had my home under repair, and it's, it's taken over a year to get permits. So we need to streamline the permitting process, and we also need to review all of the regulations that the county has in place that may be interfering with increasing the supply of housing to bring down the cost and allow people to have homes at a reasonable price.
Next question goes to Mr. Knotts. What, if any, changes in the county's policies concerning addiction treatment and recovery would you support?
Well, again, this, this ties in also with the homelessness issue, although it's not solely that. I think that we, we need a kind of a carrot-and-stick approach on some of this. We need to be able to use the leverage of state law, county ordinances, et cetera, to kind of push people in the right direction to get help, to, to get treatment for their addictions. And beyond that, I think there is going to be some changes with, with the challenge before the Supreme Court of grants passed. That case will allow the county to have a little more flexibility in, in these areas.
Mr. Yoker, your response?
Create more partners, like, you know, AA, NA, not just the county or the city programs, but increase the programs, because they're, they're all full right now, and add more, more programs around the homeless shelter. But it's not, not just the homeless that are having problems, it's the regular residents that are having problems, and everybody should have access to it.
The next question goes to Mr. Yoker. What, if any, weight should voters give the number of candidates' financial supporters, the identities of their donors, and the amount of their average contributions?
Well, I, as an independent, I, I really don't believe in that, because when candidates get donations, they, they tend to favor the organizations or the people that, that give money. I'm not accepting any donations at all, and it's running on my ability and what I know about the city of Portland and Multnomah County.
Mr. Knotts, your response?
Well, I think it does raise a question, you know. I have received some donations, but my candidate, my candidacy is a pretty small, financially speaking, candidacy. When people, when organizations especially contribute, contribute large amounts of money through PACs, et cetera, you do have to ask, ask what are they expecting in return? And, you know, all the big organizations are not endorsing either of us that are here today, and I would just say, my, my support has come from just individuals, just small, small amounts for the most part.
All right, the next question goes to Mr. Knotts. Are you satisfied with the board's current handling of the 24-hour mental health crisis in Sobering Center? And if not, what changes would you support?
Well, I mean, it, it is back in business, as I understand it, but it is kind of a shame that, basically, the chair had to be shamed into revisiting the previous decision to close it down. Should never have been closed. But we need an entirely different approach to this, to behavioral health that involves mental health professionals, drug addiction, addiction experts, law enforcement, and the judiciary. They, they need to take a fair-minded approach to this. And there are some very promising programs in other states. I've talked before about the Kodak program in Rhode Island that seems to be doing a pretty good job with people that are suffering from addiction.
Mr. Yoker, your response?
Yeah, the counties, they're on the right track. The county and the city are on the right track. Of course, making changes to an existing program would be the key, and actually diving in a little bit deeper and finding out where the, where the hangups are, what's taking so long, and make the programs a little better, maybe open up some more programs closer to where the people need them.
All right, the next question goes to Mr. Yoker. What is your impression of the preschool-for-all program implementation so far? What steps should the county take to ensure full implementation by 2030?
Preschool-for-all is kind of misleading. I think they put an age of four and five-year-olds. It should include everybody in preschool. I mean, I mean, that'd be great to get the folks back to work, but doing a hundred percent free preschool is not necessarily the right way to go either. Maybe like 90%. If you do a hundred percent preschool-for-all, why should I go to work or get free preschool? But they should include all the children.
Mr. Knotts, your response?
Well, I don't know that we know enough yet to be able to, you know, we need metrics to judge how well this program is being implemented, and long-term, I don't know. I don't know that this is necessarily something for everyone. Not everybody wants their kids in a preschool program, and it's not necessarily beneficial for, for every kid, but for those that are underprivileged, it makes a lot of sense. So I think we just need some more metrics, some more, some more looking at the results, and then we can make a judgment.
The next question goes to Mr. Knotts, and we may have sort of covered this. Does your campaign have any personal restrictions on any otherwise legal campaign contributions that a Multnomah County Commissioner candidate can accept? In other words, do you have limitations for the acceptance of contribution that are permitted?
Not that I know of. I don't, I don't have any conflict of interest, if that's what basically you're getting to. I don't do any work for the county or anything like that, so, man, I'm not really in a position to do work for the county, generally speaking. So I would say no.
Mr. Yoker, your response?
No, I don't have any restrictions, but I take issue with other candidates taking larger donations from a larger companies or corporations.
All right, the next question goes to you, Mr. Yoker. What changes in county conflict of interest rules, if any, would you support?
Conflict of interest would be, I can't, can't respond to that at this time.
Okay. Mr. Knotts, your response? Any changes to county conflict of interest rules?
I don't know that we necessarily need any changes in particular. The number one thing that we need is transparency. We need to know who is contributing to whom, and then we can judge for ourselves as to whether we think that may be, you know, may imply some undue influence on what the candidate would do when in office.
The next question goes to Mr. Knotts. The most recent budget of the Multnomah County Commission was more than $3.6 billion. How can you reassure the voters that your experience and education has prepared you to oversee and improve a budget of this size?
Well, I guess you could ask the same about any of the current commissioners. We don't necessarily just pop into office with all of this experience in managing large budgets. There, there are a few people that might have something that, that may pertain to that, but I would say that it's, it's more of a situation where, you know, having an education and understanding the world and having life experience, that allows you to make the individual decisions that culminate in the budget as it is. So, you know, I don't know that we can necessarily just elect financial experts.
Okay, thank you.
They might have some idea.
Mr. Yoker, what would be your response there?
Follow the money, track it. I know from personal experience, when I worked for the city of Portland, all departments get large bonuses every year, and, and I'm not sure if we, Multnomah County should be paying for their large bonuses when we give the city Portland money. But like, some of the homeless tiny villages, they're, the, the management's getting way too much money for, for just operating. So yeah, track the money, and undercover boss program would take care of that.
My next question goes to Mr. Yoker. Both of you are candidates for Multnomah County Commissioner. What, if any, reforms would you support in the process of electing a Multnomah County Commissioner?
What reforms?
Yeah, you may not, there may be none that you would support. You think the system is fine as it is, how we elect our commissioners.
Well, I'd like to do more on the accountability phase, and, because I think a lot of the supervisor or the department heads are making way too much money. Possibly force early retirement and hire within, could save a lot of money that way.
Okay, Mr. Knotts?
I don't know that we necessarily need a change to the electoral process in this office. There are some other parts of the country, there are municipalities, counties, that have a much larger body of commissioners. We could look at that, but along the West Coast, this is typically how it's done, and I don't really see that, I don't really see that that really is creating the problems that we have. I think the problems that we have are caused by just bad ideas, and we need to, we need to have better ideas.
The next question goes to Mr. Knotts. Are you satisfied with the ambulance response times of the county's emergency services provider, American Medical Response? If not, what changes would you support?
Yeah, this, this one, this should be an easy one. All of the surrounding counties allow better response times by, by only requiring one paramedic and one EMT. For whatever reason, the chair has been resistant to changing that, to changing from our current system, which is, it requires two paramedics on, on many, if not most, calls. So as a result, especially in rural areas, we have higher response times. So we need to, we need to change that like yesterday. Then we, that will help, that will be one thing that will help. And then we need to just review the contract with AMR and see if this is something that we want to continue down the road, or if we want to look at alternatives, because part of the problem is, you know, staffing problems on the AMR side. So I think, I think we need to definitely take it, take another look at that.
Mr. Yoker, your response?
Yeah, AMR is, like, the staffing rule makes a lot of sense, make that change, but if they're not able to cover the, the contract, we should maybe split the city up and get another ambulance service in here that, that can cover the time. AMR has expanded their services to another county, and so they're not able to keep up with the response times. So if they're not doing the job, let's find somebody else who can, or split the contract up so we can cover the whole city and the county.
You are watching the video of the Voter Forum of the League of Women Voters of Portland or listening to our podcast for candidates for the 4th District of the Multnomah County Commission. Our next question goes to Mr. Yoker. Are you satisfied with the performance of the Joint Office of Homeless Services? If not, what changes would you support?
Well, I'm satisfied with the direction they're going, and I, I believe there are some changes that can be made. I would have to look at it a little bit more deeply, like, you know, no more sidewalk camping. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous. Do the closest park and set up light security and move them to a park temporarily until we can get them back to where they need to go.
Mr. Knotts?
Well, I think the concept is a good one, to combine forces to address a huge problem. But, and so I, I think I would keep the, you know, keep the structure as it is, and then we just have to look at some, some new ideas. The other thing is that this is an issue that is not purely a county or a state or metro issue. This is also a federal issue, and we really need some help at the federal level with this, because Multnomah County cannot solve the entire country's homelessness problem, and to some degree, it is being kind of foisted upon us. So we definitely need some more help with, from the feds on this.
The next question goes to Mr. Knotts. What, if any, changes in the county's policies concerning addiction treatment and recovery would you support?
Well, again, I have said I want to look at a range of options. So there are programs in, in other states where you have, you have medical facilities that are open to people who want to seek out addiction help, and then you have some people that are in a, you know, they're, they're, they're committing crimes, and, and the result of their addiction is that they're committing crimes. And so you use that leverage to get them into treatment, even if they don't want to necessarily be in treatment. So we need a program like that. That would, I think, make a big difference in, because, because we do have a lot of people out there committing crimes that are addicted to drugs, and they, they need help, but also society needs help because of the problems that this creates.
Mr. Yoker?
Can you repeat the question, please?
What changes, if any, in the county's policies concerning addiction treatment and recovery would you support?
What changes?
Yes.
Move the, we need more recovery services. move the, uh, we need more recovery services, uh, closer to the, um, the homeless. Uh, I guess, uh, from what I understand, they're, they're all full right now. And people are just sitting there waiting in, uh, the tiny houses or the tiny hotels, uh, from six months to a year. Um, so open up more, more services and, um, bring in more partners.
The next question goes to Mr. Yooker. What persons or entities have contributed the most money to your campaign?
Uh, nobody has.
All right, uh, Mr. Notts?
Uh, I just have a couple of personal, uh, donations from, uh, people that I know. Uh, no particular, uh, industry or, uh, companies or organizations have contributed to me.
The next question goes to Mr. Notts. In what circumstances do you think it's appropriate for the Multnomah County Commission Board to take positions on international or foreign affairs? And why?
Yeah, I think generally speaking, the county needs to focus on county issues. And that's, that's one of the part, one of the emphases of my campaign. Uh, we spend time, you know, we, we have these problems that aren't getting solved at the county level and we're spending time on issues where the county has no competence. The county can't do anything about wars abroad. Uh, the county can't do anything even really, I mean, we're suing Exxon, right? Uh, we can't necessarily, I mean, that's, that's kind of a long shot. With, and, and we have federal, uh, uh, well, we have the federal government to do those sorts of things. So yeah, I, I want to stay out of those things. I want to focus on our county and the services that we're supposed to be providing to be.
Mr. Yooker?
Yeah, um, definitely, uh, the commissioners, uh, should make their, uh, opinion known. But, uh, not every time the council meets, I notice they're, they're getting tied up with all these people, uh, uh, asking for support for, uh, overseas issues and the wars and whatnot. We're not really in control of, uh, what other countries or the, the federal government does in regards to wars. But, uh, uh, we should focus more on county issues and taking care of business at home.
Uh, the next question goes to Mr. Yooker. Explain how you would approach approval or disapproval of legal settlements of claims against the county.
It depends on what it is. There's, uh, too many variables on that question. Um, of course, uh, I would support a claim that's warranted and I would make necessary changes to the county so it doesn't happen again.
Mr. Notts?
Yeah, I, I mean, I would agree. That's kind of a, a difficult question to answer. I think, uh, I think generally speaking, you, you know, you, you make a judgment and then if, if the county's judgment is challenged, then the courts will decide it.
Thank you. The candidates may now provide their one-minute closing statements with Mr. Yooker going first. Mr. Yooker, you may close.
With, um, my, uh, experience, uh, throughout the years and my, uh, thinking outside the box, uh, and a determination and, uh, a goal-setting attitude. Like, between me and the other commissioners, we will get the job done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yooker. Mr. Notts, you may close.
Thank you for, uh, for this opportunity to talk to the voters. And, uh, I would say that, uh, we need change. And if we want change, we have to vote for change. We can't just keep electing the same people that are supported by the same organizations and expect something different because it's not going to change. So I will change things and I will also keep in mind that we can't just keep spending money and spending money without any limits. We have to work within a, a budget and we have to respect that the voters and the, there, there are limits to how much taxes they're willing to pay. We don't want to drive out, uh, hires from this county. It's very important to keep the economy, uh, going here. So again, my name is Brian Notts and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Notts. This concludes today's voter forum with the candidates for the fourth district of the Multnomah County Commission. We thank each of the candidates for their participation. Audience members, please share this forum recording and podcast with your family and friends. We all need to be informed voters. If you are registered to vote by April 30th, you should receive your ballot by May 6th. As with all Oregon elections, almost all voters will participate by mailing in their ballots only, although in-person voting is available. Check your Multnomah County Voters Pamphlet online or when the paper copy arrives by mail at your household. To be counted, ballots must be postmarked by Tuesday, May 21st at 8:00 PM. You can also find an official ballot drop box location near you by checking www.vot411.org or in the Multnomah County Voters Pamphlet. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit membership organization. We hope this forum was meaningful to you. We welcome you to join or contribute at llv.pdx.org. This is Chris Koby for the League of Women Voters of Portland. Thank you for watching and listening and for being an informed voter. And remember, your vote counts.